All the members of the board, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, July 16, 2015, time is seven o'clock. Please call the roll.
President Sal.
Here.
Trustee Valerie.
Here.
Trustee Lumsden.
Here.
Trustee Sudby.
Here.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Village Manager Francis.
Here.
Village Attorney Lena.
Here.
Not with us this evening, Trustee Collins and Trustee Pollack, also President Village Clerk Cathy Haley.
We have a quorum, if you please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone who's here with us tonight and everyone watching at home. If you are here with us tonight and you'd like to make a comment to the board at any time, I just ask that you be recognized by the president and you make your comment from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. Up first tonight is public comment. Is there anyone here who would like to address the board? Mr. Ray?
Richard Ray, 262 Lionell Road. Today, tonight, I'd like to address the board briefly about the situation of the monarch butterfly. It's on the verge of extinction. It makes a long migration to South America and on its way, it needs milkweed, which is the only thing that it feeds on. And as I walk from Miller Road to the fall here, I found two or three little stretches of, three or four, milkweed. And Ed Bailey informed me that there are other areas of milkweed. But I think the village is in a very good position to, number one, if the size of the field of milkweed is an attraction to the, more of an attraction to the butterfly than an individual plant scattered out here and there, that the village is in a pretty good position to plant milkweed to benefit these creatures. And, to be honest with you, I think the village is in a good position to actually raise monarch butterflies. That can be done. All of this information is available on the web at, just look up monarch butterfly and you'll find all the information you need on how to raise butterflies and what milkweed is necessary for their survival. So I'd appreciate if the board would just, if it would be thought about, the possibility that we could plant a more dense field of milkweed and perhaps even raise monarch butterflies. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ray.
May I make a comment?
Yes, please do.
I just wanted to tell Mr. Ray that I'm a member of Riverside Presbyterian Church. We put in a butterfly garden this year. It includes milkweed and yesterday we saw a monarch butterfly in it. So just wanted to let you know that.
I've seen one so far.
Yeah, well, I'll speak with Mike Collins, our village forester, about that and see if there are any good locations and then we'll come back and discuss this aboard. I'd like, I thank you very much for that.
I'm sure you've thought that, but anyway, we could go into a 3D program. The information you said, all right, that's going to be too expensive or too burnable, something to do that. But the number that you're seeing, that's, you may recall.
I'm aware of that, right.
The number of monarchs we've received this time of year passing through Riverside. I saw two so far. Saw one. That's highly sustainable population.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ray. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Hearing none next up this evening is a presentation by Chief Weitzel.
Mr. President, trustees, and manager Francis, I've come before you right tonight to honor one of our residents and one of our longtime Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, Bob Peters. And I want to read you a little bit of his background, but when I was looking up before I came over here today, Bob has hired every single current police officer on the department but myself. And in those officers, they have even ones that have gone on. So that just shows you how long his tenure is. But I'd like to brief the board a little bit on his career and then talk a little bit about his time on the Fire and Police Board. Bob is a resident of Riverside. He's a graduate of Morton West High School, Knox College. He got a BA in English Literature. He's also a graduate of University of Illinois College of Law where he got his law degree. His employment has included amongst other things, the editor and editorial department administrator for Callahan and Company in Chicago and private law practice in Chicago from 1973 to 2005 where he specialized in civil litigation in state and federal trial and appeals courts. Civic activity in addition to the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners included Freda Law Olmsted Society, Riverside Little League, and the Riverside Swim Club. He's here tonight with his wife, who is, Carol is here and you probably know her from real estate business. And I'd also like to mention two of our commissioners are here. Our chairperson, Bill Smith, is here and our other board member, Pat Lang, is also in attendance. So when I found out that Bob was going off the commission and we looked up his file that I have over the years on officers that have been hired, the commission does a lot. I mean, they, kind of a board or a commission here that kind of runs under the radar a little bit because I think in all my years of being on the, coming either as deputy chief or chief, we've probably had one or two people attend our public meetings. Because we don't, what the board does is they hire, in some cases, discipline. They promote. They make eligibility lists for both hire and promotion. And they're involved extensively in oral interviews in the process. And really, that comes into play at hiring. I mean, there's times that these board members have interviewed 50 to 60 applicants that make it to that level, that started out with maybe 140 applicants, and they interview each of them extensively. And from that list comes the list that's eventually posted for eligibility. And I think you can look at the quality of officers we have and see that Bob and the board do an excellent job. People would think that the chief of police hires these officers. They don't. The Board of Fire and Police Commissioners are responsible for that eligibility list and the, also the eligibility list for promotion. So he's had a long career with the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners and I will miss him on there. Bob was somebody who would stay around after the meetings and we'd talk about just what's going on in Riverside and what was going on crime-wise or what was happening. He was always very interested in what was taking place. But most of all, he really cared about who they hired for the police department. When these commissioners sit down after the interviews are done and they figure out what the eligibility list is, not only do they file the state statutes, okay, but you have, you have board members who are residents here who genuinely care about the quality and the type of people that we hire as police officers. And I think you can see those just in the officers we've hired over the last five or six years. They always are looking for quality. In most cases nowadays, almost everybody that appears in front of this board has college education. When I started, that wasn't the case. It was a rarity. And we also have a lot of military veterans that are returning that are coming into law enforcement these days. So I'm going to give Bob the police department's patch. I'd like to read what's on the back first before I present it. It's dated today's date, the 16th. It says, "Bob, thank you for your years of volunteer service to the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners and the Riverside Police Department. You'll be missed." It's signed by myself, Tom Weitzel, Chief of Police. And I really, really can't tell you enough about how wonderful you've been on the commission and thank you so much for all your service.
I'll be very short. This is, this is wonderful. I'll cherish this. I just want to tell you how much I appreciate the opportunity to work with chief, past chiefs, and my friends on the board. It's, it's been a very interesting life experience and I also want to thank the board for, for its cooperation with the operation of the police department in this, in this village. It's been a, it's been a good situation for a long time. And I think that's it. I'm not much of a public speaker, even though I did practice law for 40 years. But I'm a little nervous and, but I'm very grateful. Thank you very much.
And if I may, just on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I mean, Chief Weitzel is right that the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners is one of those boards that, who is largely a notice by most of our residents. It's not as visible as the preservation or landscape or some of the other commissions. And that you would have devoted such a long time on that commission is extraordinary. And the quality of police officers we have in this village is a direct result of that service. We greatly appreciate it, Mr. Peters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is reports of village officers. I do not have a report this evening. Manager Francis?
Nor do I.
Next is approval of consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'd ask for a motion in a second to approve.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Valerie.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hamilton. Please call the roll.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Sudby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Motion carries. I did have, I forgot, I'd had a request from one of the trustees prior to the meeting. We, on the consent agenda is a resolution to enter into an amended intergovernmental agreement with the Water Reclamation District with regard to the distribution of rain barrels. So I just asked Manager Francis if she could just brief the residents on what exactly that is again, because it's a very good opportunity. It kind of fits in with the same kind of sustainability issues that Mr. Ray was talking about. Ms. Francis?
Absolutely. And I do want to give credit to Village Clerk Cathy Haley, who has worked a lot with MWRD with coordination of this particular agreement. With regard to the rain barrels, before, in the previous agreement, you had to disconnect your downspouts. Now, that is no longer part of the agreement. So if residents that already disconnected from the system would like rain barrels, they can go ahead and reach out and we will go ahead and coordinate that accordingly. So that is the big piece of this particular item. And I also believe that we'll have, make note of that in our Riverside review and we'll probably also send out an eflash notifying residents of that particular update as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Francis.
Sure.
Next up, reports of departments. Of course. Can you, could you, can you ask from up there, please? I'm sorry.
I've been collecting rainwater for 35, 40 years. Right now I have about 15 of them, but not rain barrels. I originally had whiskey barrels, but they rotted, you know? Now I'm using 30-gallon garbage cans. And what I found it hard to find are diverters that you could use once you fill those up because, believe it or not, a rain like we had today, that filled up the barrel. That filled up a barrel, you know? It's incredible how much water. And I have, I have two downspouts that deliver the grade and one, two, three that deliver the rain barrels. And I've got about 18 of these 30-gallon containers. And I'm going to have to go home tonight and bale some of those to make room for the rain that's going to happen tonight. And I'm wondering if the, if it's possible to get diverters so that when you filled up your barrel, you can, you can divert it back into the, into the sewer.
I don't know if the diverters are part of the program. I know certainly you can get the diverters online. They're readily accessible. But we can check with MWRD and see if the diverters might be something.
I'm not a great computer user, so I didn't know that. But nobody can provide them. I've gone to all the...
And maybe Director Bailey's behind you. Maybe he can also assist if MWRD doesn't offer it. We can go ahead and reach out to you as well.
Can you please help me get the...
I've got four by six, two.
Thank you, Director Bailey.
You got our attention when you started talking about your whiskey barrels. Departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons, any reports? Mr. Valerie, did you want to talk about the fourth, perhaps?
I want to talk about the third, fourth, if I could. What is that? You know, I, I can't, I can't say enough how appreciative I am and I, and I know the Village of Riverside residents are to the village staff. I mean, they, you know, from Public Works, Police, obviously Ron at the Recreation Department, Annie, Colleen, and everyone that works there. It's, it's a wonderful... It, it's a lot of work and it went seamlessly. It was, it was beautiful. It was a beautiful weekend, great weather. The band was great. We had, I don't know how many people were in the park, but every year we go out there and surprises me that we fed more people in there. So it was, it was amazing. So thank you for all the staff, for all their help and everything. And I appreciate it. Friends of the forest, they, they, they do collect donations and they, they make some things work, but they could never even do a quarter of what they do without staff. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Anything else? Moving on, next up, our considerations, our first discussion tonight is a continuation of our sidewalk paving requirements discussion. Mr. Bailey?
Where we left off last time was continuing discussion about whether to go with exposed aggregate or broom-finished concrete. One of the questions that some of the board members had was, had to do with the ADA-type requirements and I provided you with some discussion from the access board, talking about stability and roughness. And there's nothing in this particular document that suggests that there's any, any problem with the exposed aggregate or the broom-finished concrete. ADA folks are very interested in things like surface smoothness, slipperiness, and, you know, There's, again, from that perspective, there's no reason to not, or to discount one type of sidewalk over the other.
Trustees?
One question. Chairman Pfeiffer from Preservation sent a nice letter and gave us some fact sheets on both linseed oil and the clear water resin. And specifically in the linseed oil, which was, it stated that it, one of the downsides, but in our, in our case would be a benefit, is it causes slight dark, as it says, "Light amber in color will cause a slight, slight dark discoloration of surface", which is, I think, positive for us. I didn't see that same statement when it came to the clear resin. Is that...
Okay. It's in the spec sheet. I gave you a spec sheet for the linseed oil and it does mention in there, I believe, that it would cause some darkening of the concrete.
And the linseed oil, as I understand, would raise the price from $6.75 a square foot to $7.25.
Yeah, 25% per square foot, I'm sure. And again, they're coming back after the concrete is installed sometime later. I think it's several weeks later to apply the linseed oil.
Which would still represent some 30% savings over exposure.
The darkening caused by the linseed oil, is that permanent? Or does it have to continually be reapplied?
I refer to Richard Eaton.
As permanent?
Expert in this room.
Believe it or not, that's all I'm going to say. Well, I appreciate it.
Other comments?
I would just like to say I maintain the position that I had last year, which is that the difference in price to me is paramount. We have so many squares of concrete needing, needing to be replaced in this village and I think it behooves us to replace them. I know in front of my house, I think I have three different types of finishes, so I can't get on this bandwagon that says that somehow we need to have exposed aggregate. I firmly believe that we should have brushed concrete.
I would make the motion that we do brush concrete and add the linseed oil at $7.25 a square foot.
And I would, I would second that.
Motion is my, Mr. Valerie's second, my Ms. Hamilton. Further discussion?
Yeah, I spent quite a bit of time on this and since, you know, I make a living out of pouring concrete, quite a bit of it at least. Ed, you spent a great deal of time with me one morning and I appreciate your time and effort and shared other locations, since I'm new to the sidewalk discussion process that you all have lived through in the last couple of terms. I think that it's kind of an interesting thing. So I polled a few of the folks during the 4th of July event. I use that as to my benefit. And, and it's an interesting thing because the results after I walked were a lot different and I wanted to share those results, to be fair, those folks that had a chance to talk with me. And, and when I spoke with those folks, I asked them very bluntly, I said, "If this piece of concrete broke in front of your house, what would you like to see?" And they said, "Well, I certainly would like to see something that would match." So I don't know if there's an opportunity to talk about ways that we can, we can have the best of both worlds. I agree from a fiscal responsibility, we have an obligation to make the sidewalks safe and as safe as we possibly can, as quickly as we can. But at the same time, I think we need to give residents an option that have an aesthetical position or concern on their own piece of property. And I don't know if we can work, you know, I talked with you a little bit about that, to understand what the impact would be to facilitate that. Can a resident, when a piece of their concrete is broke, come back and say, "I'd like to pay the 30% difference to keep my piece looking proper and aligned"? And I don't know if that's too much work to do. I could see, it certainly would add a burden to you. I don't know how much of a burden it would be. But again, I think out of the 12 folks that I polled, excuse me, and asked if they would talk to me a little bit, went to their properties and stood in front of their house and then took them to pieces of concrete, they, all 12, were unanimous in the fact that they would be frustrated with a different colored piece of concrete. So that's, that's my only position is trying to get...
The problem with that theory, and I appreciate that, is you don't know what's in front of those 12 people's homes because exposed aggregate has only been put in since the mid-'70s. So in front of their homes could be brushed concrete.
Yeah, it could be.
That's old. Or it could be the granite that was put down at some time. I think the linseed oil at least gets us to that point where it dulls that bright white, which is what everyone has, which is what I hear is the, is the major complaint, even though that doesn't bother me because it's going to, it's going to fade anyway. But the linseed oil will dull it down. I don't, I don't think that the pestilization is actually the, the issue.
My concern with that also is, and I, I agree, if I were given the choice, of course, I would like everything to match. But if you walk through this village, there are probably 50 different examples of exposed aggregate, too. You know, I mean, depending on the pour, each pour of exposed aggregate is a little bit different, so...
But I think we saw like 10 different types in the two blocks we walked. So I, I mean, I agree with you.
Yeah.
We have all sorts. There's black granites and all the different ones that we have. I'm just trying to figure out if there's a way to, to have a program that can allow us to move as quickly as possible forward with replacing sidewalk and give a resident the opportunity to pay and augment that cost if they want it to match that's, that's there. I mean, the street that we live on, I think the other thing that I really want to try and work with, with Ed's folks on is we looked at the piece of property that, we're pretty fortunate on Fairbanks, because every 20 squares, there's an expansion joint. And we don't have any broken concrete on our sidewalk, which is pretty interesting. And the other places that I walked, even after I was with you, for some reason, they haven't been putting in that, that expansion joint. And I think that might be contributing to the speed at which our current sidewalks are failing. The other thing that I noticed is you could see truck traffic, tires, and broken concrete. I think there's a way, we have to start policing, once we get the sidewalks back into a good spot, of making those that break them responsible to repair them. And I think that there's, that's, there's some ongoing task that will help us better our position. A utility company drives over a sidewalk and busts it and then we're stuck with that tab two years later when it's all broke and then becomes a tripping hazard. So the only thing I thought was if we could come up with a situation, so if somebody from their lot line to their lot line has two pieces of concrete that need to be fixed and they wanted to pay an extra three bucks a square foot to make it all match, then we give them that opportunity. I don't know if it's an opportunity, again, you and I talked about the burden of placement.
Two things to come to mind, that would require significant interaction with those residents to determine if they're interested and which they would like to match. We have two choices, exposed aggregate, three-eighths inch, exposed, three-eighths inch pea gravel, exposed aggregate, and broom-finished concrete. One of the issues I think would be of concern to the contractor, if you had 14 people or there's 14 squares that we wanted to replace with exposed aggregate, say, you know, that's not much of a load for a truck, you know, a ready-mix truck.
You don't want any of this down.
Right.
Right. That makes it even more challenging. I agree with you, like, yeah.
You know, I don't think that would be fair to, to expect the contractor to, I don't, I don't even know if they could do it from the plant, you know, to have half a load or quarter load or something.
You'd have to have, what, 10 yards of concrete identified of each type every time you go to try and do. I didn't say the logistic... I know it's not easy.
And I really think the logistic part's dispositive because the other, the other component, I, one of the, the great struggle here has been the effort to make things match as much as possible, as you're saying. So under your scenario, you could have this homeowner that says, "Yes, I want it to match and be exposed aggregate." The next homeowner could say, "I don't care if it matches, put down brushes of mint." And we're, and we're back, we're exactly back in the situation that we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, I was...
I mean, I think, I really think this is a situation where we can't be solemn. I think we're going to have to, we're going to have to make a change.
And even, even out in Naperville, on the Riverside missions, I just happened to notice the concrete, since you guys all brought it to my mind, it was different between property, property, because each contractor at that point that's building the home had to pour their sidewalk as part of the rule. So you'd have that widen and it would be a little bit darker and different aggregate and then it'd be bruised somewhere, picture frame somewhere, so...
Further comments?
I, I guess I'll reiterate my position, too. I think we're voting to fundamentally change the character of the village, the sidewalks. I mean, I don't care if it's only been since the '70s or how long it's been, but it's a change. I happen to live in a neighborhood, I'm sure there's others, that had the brushed concrete put in and I still maintain it's an eyesore. And I maintain that there are a number of residents that agree with me on that position. Whether they'd pay extra for it or not, I don't know. I know I would. I know a lot of people would. So I do think that that's a great idea. But I think we're not trying to match exactly. So the aggregate concrete isn't designed to be matched exactly. But when you're putting an aggregate concrete block right next to a very white-looking brushed concrete, it is a very striking difference. And I was told it'll fade in months. Now I'm told it'll fade in... And I was told it'll fade in months now, I'm told it'll fade in years. I'm sure we'll say it's gonna fade in decades now. I don't know what's next. But I think that it's, in the character of the village, I think it's worth the incremental cost to do it right.
So the motion before us...
And can I ask one more question? I didn't see it, is this something that requires a resolution or motion? Because I just saw that we were discussing this tonight, and that voting guy...
It's direction to staff. You know, the agreement provides for alternatives, and you're just directing Ed in which branch of the why you want him to direct in this multi-jurisdictional bidding thing. So it doesn't require a formal kind of ordinance or resolution or anything with that, it's direction, you know, and it can be brought back up again if someone...
Unless we decide we want exposed aggregate, then we have to change the village code.
Oh, that's true. We have the code provisions that were changed.
Correct.
Change to allow for...
Brushed concrete is what it currently states.
Does it require brushed concrete, or does it say that you can use brushed concrete? I'm just curious.
Requires brushed concrete.
So we've made a switch to, so right now, currently it requires brushed concrete. So if I'm a homeowner, and I'm willing to pay for my own sidewalk to make it exposed aggregate to match my sidewalk going up to my house, I am forbidden from doing that.
The way it's currently drafted, that's correct. Because the previous version had a requirement that it be aggregate. And so when they decided to try the brushed concrete, the ordinance was flipped.
So the motion for us is a motion to direct staff to use brushed concrete with a linseed oil finish. Any further discussion? This call overall.
Trusty Valerie?
Aye.
Trusty Lumsden?
Nay.
Trusty Setteby?
Nay.
Trusty Hamilton?
Aye.
Residents of...
Nay. And let me, I would like to comment on this. I would, I have gone back and forth on this for a long time. In fact, I was probably one of the first people that suggested going to brushed concrete. Ever since that time, we always end up right here, with a 50-50 tie. And my sense is, I did the calculations on the existing squares we have that are defective. It runs to be a little bit over four miles of linear feet of defective squares. So even if we were to do that, we'd have about 43 more miles of concrete sidewalks that we need to eventually replace. It would take us decades to replace those. So whereas, my personal belief is that I don't have any problem with brushed concrete, but I do think that this board is representative of our community, and if it's this close within our community, that the choice between the aggregate and the brushed concrete, I think in a situation like this, we're better to stay with the status quo. I understand, I more than understand the financial impact of this, but it isn't, well, it is, but it's also, it's an incremental amount spread over a number of years. Now, we still have to go back now, because the only motion we just discussed was the linseed oil thing. So now the question is, do we want to direct staff to revise the ordinance to allow for aggregate?
I think we've got ourselves in an unusual box, because if I take the street that we just poured the sidewalk, which is all now brushed concrete, and all of it matches, and it all looks wonderfully well, and we get a piece broken over there, and we go back and change it to say that the code has to have aggregate, I think we're making the same problem of getting a patchwork again. I think, and again, I don't think we're gonna solve it tonight, in all honesty. I think that this is gonna be an ongoing challenge, that we're gonna have to try and look at it. And I know it's gonna be a burden to you if we come up with a plan where we try and take portions, because I mean, those folks that are on that street, I'm trying to think, it's the street right along the river, right before you get to the bridge. Forgive me for not knowing what it is, I drive on it every day. And it's a brand-new sidewalk, and it looks beautiful, because it all kind of matches, right? Two people putting new sidewalks up to their homes. So if we flip-flop right back again, and they break a piece of concrete over there, will we put an aggregate piece on a brushed concrete?
My experience, at least on my block, which is Gage and Lawton, there's not many instances where there's even two blocks, two squares together that were replaced. So, and that's really what makes it look more patchwork.
Yeah, see, I want to empower Ed, when he sees a block, when he sees a broken one, a good one, and a broken one, that at that point, we would sacrifice the one good one, and put in three that would match at least, right? Because I mean, we gotta have some way to empower you to make a judgment call.
We have to, this board has to decide whether it's gonna be aggregate or brushed cement. That's the decision. We can't, there's no way of having it both ways. I appreciate what you're trying to do, but the overwhelming majority of sidewalk in the town is aggregate, is exposed aggregate.
True. That's not true. That's not true at all. You can't say that. The amount of sidewalks in town overwhelmingly is brushed concrete. It is not aggregate. Aggregate has only been poured since the '70s. If you're gonna go aggregate, then you need to go back and say, okay, we're gonna go aggregate, then we need to do our aprons in aggregate, and we need to tell our residents to do their driveways in aggregate. And now you have just imposed a 30% tax on both the village and our residents. So if you're gonna do it, do it right. Because now you have exposed aggregate on the sidewalks, you have brushed concrete on the aprons, you have brushed concrete on the driveways. And if you walk down the streets and look around, you cannot tell the difference between driveways and sidewalks. This eyesore thing is, it's not, it's not, it's not true. It's just not true. You cannot tell the difference. There are like three exposed aggregate driveways in town. So if you're gonna do it, do it right, and say, okay, then all driveways, all aprons have to be exposed aggregate, every concrete that's poured in this village has to be exposed aggregate. And that way, someday it'll all match, and you know what? You impose a 30% tax on not only the village, on our work, but the residents on their work.
I don't agree that that would be necessary. I mean, I think, again, we're going to, the difference, and the difference between what we did last year and what was existing is stark. Whether that's, again, two years, five years, 10 years, 20 years, I don't know.
And it's new versus old, and it's always gonna be stark. There's no question about that. There's no question about that.
But the rest of the village, I think, there is less of a difference.
Because it's older. Give it time. But that, you know what, that forces out of the barn. So now figure out what you want to do with the aggregate.
Can I ask for clarification? Does our code currently say aggregate on the aprons? Or...
No, but it did.
It doesn't reference the aprons, it references the sidewalks, correct? Because when I look around, most of the aprons, I would agree with you, are brushed concrete, with the little diagonal anti-skid lines or sliplines in it, right? And to me, that's, they're all consistent. And then we have an aggregate, we have consistent, our aprons were all done when they redid the curves.
And part of that is, most of the aprons on the right-of-way side are done as part of road improvement projects, and that they aren't gonna be doing aggregate, they use the same thing that they use when they pour the curves, you know, and then...
It comes right in.
But we had exposed aggregate on our aprons four years ago. That was one of the, that was one thing we changed. We had that. That was part of our code. So, you know, if you don't like the difference between brushed concrete and exposed aggregate, then do everything exposed aggregate, be done with it. If you're gonna do it, do it right, because you're still gonna have a patchwork. At least the linseed oil allows us to dye it down, and bring that aging quicker.
But I think that, you know, what the folks I've talked to, it's not, color is part of it, the other part of it is the texture and the appearance. And, you know, I think that your all-or-nothing doesn't make sense to me, because what we're talking about is the public, the public right-of-way. You know, it's one thing to talk about private driveways, if somebody wants to have a cobblestone or a, you know, brushed cement, but the notion that because we're doing this, therefore we would have to require residents to change what their driveways are, I think is specious.
But the reason you're doing it is because you don't like the patchwork. So if you don't like, so if that is the reason, is you don't like patchwork concrete, then solve that problem.
But the issue, but what we're talking...
So it's not capacious, or whatever.
Well, I would argue, though, when we were using the exposed aggregate, we didn't have the stark contrast. We've only had the stark contrast for the last year.
And I have to say, the proof of that is the exposed aggregate that was poured last year, right out here.
I'm not saying...
And the match, the match between the exposed aggregate that was poured and the existing exposed aggregate, versus what we saw on Gage or South Code, is dramatic.
And that's why I'm more than willing to pay an extra 25 cents to have the linseed oil put down, so it dyes it down. Because it's not a texture, it's a color. Everyone complains about the color. Now everyone talks about the texture. No, everyone complains about the color, and I've talked to several people that said, I don't care. Some lady went up to Jean at Raw and gave her an earful because of Jean's position on this, because she thought it was a waste of money. So there's, like you say, this board is split down the middle, and probably so are the residents.
This is not exactly on point to what Trusty Lumsden was saying, but what some communities do is, they have a standard for their sidewalks, and I mean, in every community I'm familiar with, it's just brushed concrete. But what they do allow is where a homeowner, because in some communities, you have people that like pavers for driveways, and they didn't like the idea of a sidewalk not matching the pavers, and then the apron. And some communities allow the filling out of some paperwork, waiving liability and issues that come up, if they need to get in there to rip it up to get at utilities or whatever. They allow a homeowner, upon request, of the filling out of the appropriate paperwork, to put in what they want. It's just it has to be at their own expense. And then they also need to understand that it's still in the right-of-way, and ultimately it might need to be ripped out, and if it is, they're not gonna put back what was there, necessarily, it would, you know, unless there were some insurance coverage or something, it might just be brushed concrete, unless they wanted to restore it. So there's that, which is not exactly what you were suggesting. It's more like a, we do what we do, it's a simple thing, but you have this option to do it, but it would be your own contractor, you know, you do it yourself.
Okay, so here's where I think we are.
I'd like to make a point, just a point of clarification, and this is kind of about me to a degree, but the contractors are breathing down my neck about getting going on this. And so I'm concerned if you, and I realize that you're right in responsibility to choose whatever concrete, but if you have to come back at your next meeting to change the ordinance to specify exposed aggregate again, it's going to be another two-week delay, and you might find that that's in the public interest, but...
Well, we don't have a choice of...
Yeah, well, what you could do, though, is, if you knew the direction, the ordinance could follow.
Make a decision.
You just would have to vote right, and it'd get through. Otherwise, we'd have a big problem.
We just not gave them direction to use aggregate, right?
Well, not formally. So we need a motion. Or do we need a motion? Well, we have to. So brushed concrete or aggregate, Mr. Valerie?
Let me guess.
I'm not even gonna talk about this anymore. Brushed concrete with linseed oil.
I gotta go with the people I talked to, and they wanted to match, and most of those folks had aggregate.
Is that it? Aggregate?
Brushed concrete.
Aggregate. Okay.
Aggregate it is.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll bring an ordinance back, but it'll be either-or, I think, for, because that way we don't have an all-or-nothing requirement. It just will allow, because the village controls by the contract.
That's fair.
Otherwise, we might be, you know, switching.
Next year, yeah.
Does that make sense, or do you want it in the code?
He needs direction for this year.
Right, right.
Oh, direction for the ordinance.
Right, who's saying the ordinance makes it basically only legal to have one kind of finish? And I mean, we could have it be exposed aggregate or brushed concrete.
Could it be flexible enough to allow for both?
I totally agree with that, because there are gonna be situations, and I trust Ed and our facilities folks to make the right call. On the street over there, we have a brand-new brushed concrete, it would be silly to come in...
Roll it down.
Thank you, yes. And it'd be silly to put aggregate over there now, because then it wouldn't match the other direction.
And so that way, the board could give direction on a contract by contract basis.
I think we should empower him to do what he thinks is best, and have the...
Yeah, bring it back. It's probably wise to bring it back.
Just to be clear, here's what I'm planning to do tomorrow, is early on in the day, is probably call a contractor and say that Riverside's going with exposed aggregate, and I'll be sending them spreadsheets with, you know, the blocks that we select, and we're off to the races with exposed aggregate.
Right, okay.
Okay.
And then the ordinance will catch up, so they won't be issued tickets when they come in to do the work we hired them to do.
So now, if you're replacing a square on a street that has brushed concrete, they're gonna have exposed aggregate sitting in the middle of that, right?
Correct.
Same thing, won't match.
It's killing me. We can do better than this, we'll figure it out.
Well, I think that there, I think this ordinance will allow some discretion. So if it's a brand-new street where the whole street is uniform, I do think that's extenuating.
But the issue under the contract, Ed, you can't direct block by block, right? You gotta, they're gonna gear up to do all the squares one way in the village?
Well, what, and the most economical way to engage a contractor for this is to do it in a concentrated area, and not, you know, onesies, twosies throughout the village, for one thing. If we were going to use this discretion of one or the other, we would have to, I think it would be important to identify enough of any given quantity to justify a full truckload.
Yeah, you could, that's what you could do, the direction could be the default is exposed aggregate, but if you find that to keep uniformity, a big enough stretch can be done the cheaper way, the board, it sounds like, would have no problem with that, right? If it was to keep a whole run, and it's a big enough quantity? Does that make sense?
What it would end up doing, it'd have like two colored flags, so the guy knows where to take the aggregate.
Can we just grab the ordinance that we threw out last year and just re-insert it, so we don't have to have everyone rewrite it again, and spend more money rewriting an ordinance we already had?
Now, well, we're gonna, we're gonna add a couple of words, so it's... Very, very small words.
Okay, all right, all right, let's keep going now. I think we've done with that one. Next up is a discussion of hardscape issues. This is a continuation of our discussion that at the last meeting, that was, that came up because of the sign at 122 Nut All. And did you want to present this, or...
Actually, Attorney Malina was...
Mr. Malina?
Jessica, I'd ask you. I'd sort of summarize. So there's a memorandum in your packets from Michael Mars. He was in Sonja, and was Jessica, were you out there, too?
No, Mr. Batley was.
Oh, Ed was out there. They did a walk to kind of determine what is the reality of what's out there now, and after putting their heads together, and after seeing what's in the right-of-way, near the right-of-way, which side of the sidewalk, they came up with a proposal that would involve creating a simplified approval process. First of all, no intrusions or obstructions would be allowed on the street side of the sidewalk in the right-of-way, you know, at all. On the private property side of the sidewalk, obstructions would be allowed in the front yard, and there's a proposal of a simplified permitting process, where permits can be issued by staff if the installation on the public right-of-way is more than three feet toward the, from the sidewalk toward the house, and that the process would include those structures that are not permanently affixed to the ground, and those that are flush to the ground, stepping stones, for instance. And so you have an ordinance that lists the things that have to go through the hardscape procedure, and there's a culling out of the ones as an example. But things like, you know, monuments and things like that would have to still go through the formal process, through the committee, the historical committee and so forth, and then be presented to the village board. But if they were these temporary-type structures, urns, for example, planters, those things could be presented to the staff, and when they confirm the appropriateness of the location, and that they weren't obstructing vision, or whatever, things like that, they would be allowed to approve those for the village. The, also was discussed, there's a provision in Article 4, Chapter 12, that deals with the removal of permanent obstructions in the right-of-way. And some of you may remember, this ordinance came into play when it was realized that somebody's house actually intruded into the right-of-way, and we had a discussion about whether to allow them to, I think, put an addition onto it, or something like that, but, and so this ordinance deals with things like that, and some changes were suggested to this ordinance, so that it dovetails with the right-of-way changes and the approval process, so that those things that are not permanent, like the planters and so forth, if they, those things wouldn't necessarily have to be removed when the house is sold. And even if they weren't permitted, but were pre-existing, just to make sure that there wasn't any tension between the ordinances. And so they were, the suggestions there are just so that they're dovetailed. And the final thing that the suggested ordinance deals with are address signs. One of the things that got us to discuss this was a monument which included an address, and it was realized that many people, first of all, it was realized that on some of the houses, based on existing rules, it's impossible to have an address monument, because it has to be set back so far, it couldn't even be in front of the house. It would have to be on the house, or it couldn't exist. It was realized that in the front yards, many people use their decorative light poles, and many homes in Riverside have these decorative lights, and many people have chosen to put their address on there. It's currently not addressed by the code, and it is not allowed, but it was thought that this is a minimal intrusion, and is an appropriate use of those poles to have an address there, and this would make it allowed as of right. And so those are the, those are the main areas, or summary of the main things that the ordinance covers. Comments?
So a planter that is there for more than 72 hours is not considered permanent anymore, am I correct?
Correct. Correct. And as long as it were three feet off the sidewalk, someone could get a permit without having to go through the whole process.
So it can't be at the end of it, it can't be at the sidewalk itself.
Right. Under the proposed, because at the sidewalk itself would be in the right-of-way.
Well, it's three feet off the sidewalk would also be in the right-of-way.
Well, it depends, but generally.
Well, many, I mean, I looked at the WBA map, I mean, there's six feet, there's eight feet.
It varies, but yes.
There's, there's some corners that are 33 feet into the, into the front yard. So, so you're saying that any planter that is at the end of a driveway or at the end of a walkway would have to be removed?
Correct. Well, unless it was approved.
Yeah, well, it could go through the whole process, right. But you'd have to spend a fair amount of money just to get a planter into it. And also, if it were pre-existing, you know, grandfathered, it wouldn't be, it would be covered as well under that other stat, so it wouldn't have to be removed when it was moved.
But to Trustee Valerie's point, imagine a situation where somebody wanted to put a couple decorative pots at the end of their driveway, and they were on the public right-of-way, and they wanted to have them there during the summer. I mean, we could, we could craft a way of handling that just by redefining permanence.
Yeah, seasonal, right, you could create that.
And that's, that's what you were getting at, right?
Part of it, but there's a lot of urns that are out on, right at the end of driveways, right at the end of sidewalks, and they don't, they don't go away when winter comes, they just get emptied.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of them.
Yeah.
There's a lot of them. This is a far-reaching proposal.
Well, you'd have to, in order to allow, you could, you could lessen, you know, currently the proposal was not to allow the intrusions closer, but you could loosen that up if you didn't care about those things. You're not, if you didn't mind those things or found them appropriate, I guess not caring is.
What is your suggestion about how, how we might handle, say, somebody that has an existing wall that's been there for decades, that is in the right-of-way? What do we do about a situation like that? Would there be some kind of grandfathering in of pre-existing?
Yeah, if they were, I mean, if, if there was a significant enough investment, yeah, I mean, you could, and then they would just not be able to replace it or allow it to deteriorate.
Our code already calls for anything that's been there before 1972.
Correct. But there's a lot of stuff that's been put there since 1972.
And I neglected to say that the memorandum also suggests that because of that fact, the date perhaps be moved up to, say, closer to 2000 for pre-existing.
So I think where we are in terms of the procedural aspect of this is, one of the things I know the board at the last meeting was very concerned about was to make sure that we got a lot of input on, because you're right, I mean, these are, these are some significant changes. So are we, are we comfortable enough with this memorandum that we could have staff discuss this with the appropriate commissions to get their input and then revisit it?
I have a lot of problems with this grandfather. But that's just me.
Of changing it or?
Well, it just, to me, smacks of, well, you all get a pass, but nobody else can do it now.
Let me ask though, maybe I misread this. There's, some or all of these pre-existing, non-conforming uses would have to be removed when the home was sold?
Yes, under the one provision in Article 4, Chapter 12.
I think that's, that helps.
Except he was saying, change it to 2000, so that's just 15 years ago.
Well, if, if you changed it, right, right now, the way it's drafted, it still has 1972.
I think if it's 1972, then I can go with it.
A lot of these things were put in without permits. They had planters or fixed, they are put in, there'd never been a permit. How do you know when they've been put in? You know, there's walls that, there's houses, there's houses that have bushes coming out, and there's, there's paper walls that go all the way around the bushes? I don't know when they're.
I still like going back to the question that we talked about and we had is, if I have a planter sitting at the end of my driveway, and a kid's riding a bike down there, and he swerves a little bit, catches his pedal on the planter and wipes out and splits his head open, who's liable?
There's a, there's a way that the village, if it's in the right-of-way, would most probably be named as a property.
That means we are putting our village at risk if we allow stuff to be on property.
And then the issue would be, is it inherently dangerous condition? Did the village know about it? You know, all those things.
We have some immunity from those types of suits, don't we?
Well, but we're getting, we're getting ready to say we can put a planter at the end of the driveway seasonally. That's all I wanted to bring up, right? And kind of bring that liability on, right, wrong, or otherwise.
Look, that same kid rides that bike and then runs into a tree. The park.
The parkway tree.
Runs into a garbage can that we put, or a bicycle, or a, or a, or a thing. The village can get named in any of that.
The tree would be on that one.
Yeah.
But I don't think, I really want to prove an opportunity to put something on public property without an opportunity to look at it from a perspective.
What I, my thought on this, I think that this memo tried to tackle an awful lot, and I think did a great job. I really do think this is a great job. I don't think we should make decisions tonight, but I think, obviously, we're not doing that, but I do think there are appropriate committees that can provide more detailed input on the specific issues we're all addressing, and I think they're a representative sample of the village, so I would strongly suggest we.
I mean, right now, the, I think, you know, the, the way the ordinance is drafted now, the most likely ones would be landscape advisory and preservation because they, they're the ones who have jurisdiction over, advisory jurisdiction over, over the hardscape. So with the board's approval, we'll have staff take it to them for their input.
And let me also reiterate, this is much more, we're suggesting something conceptually that's much more permissive than the code currently allows.
Exactly.
Right, right. I just want to make sure that's clear so people don't think we're pulling back.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an attempt to drive regulations that match with reality is the goal and still have reason on it.
I think we also still have a parliamentary issue, though.
Correct. The, the issue is that at your last meeting, the issue of the McGrath's monument address sign was subject to a motion to reconsider. The motion passed, which meant that the decision was that there would be a vote on the merits again, a second time, and that was, according to the minutes, the tabling was to today. The reason that President Sells said it's parliamentary is because a motion to reconsider is supposed to be dealt with at the next meeting, and so we're at the meeting when it was penciled in. It's not on the agenda, but you're not, really don't want to take action on it anyway as a policy matter because my understanding is, the idea would be to deal with that motion once the new rules, if there are new rules, are in place so that the McGraths, if they couldn't keep their sign where they have it, would know where they could put it, if that makes sense. And so with that in mind, there needs to be a motion to table, the motion to reconsider to a date certain, and given all the routes and circuitous meanderings that this memo has to go through, my, my recommendation is, how does the meeting October 1st sound to have it come back? So the motion would be to table the vote on the reconsideration motion to October 1st, 2015.
I'd ask for a motion of second. Motion by Mr. Valerie.
Second.
Second of Mr. Lumsden. Please call the roll.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Lumsden.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And so then Jessica went, in preparation for that meeting, should be on the agenda as an action item for approval of that, if it fails, but it should read for approval of the, allowing the hardscape.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Malina. Appreciate that guidance. Is there any new business? Yes, sir. Mr. Ray?
I can add something. Mr. Turner. I know, I don't know where, but I know that there is a, an amendment that allows for historic structures, named historic structures, that have, was named with the obstruction. I can think of three offhand, but I'm not good at addresses, so I can't give them to you, except for the Coonley Estate. Obviously, the Coonley Estate, those big planter pots at the end of the driveway are in, in fact, the public right-of-way. So there is an exception, and we discovered that along the line when some work wanted to be done on that. And so there was an amendment somewhere, and I don't know where, to be honest with you, that historically identified properties that have such construction on the right-of-way can maintain it.
Right.
Okay.
We'll make sure we look at that. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Any new business this evening?